Thank you. Caller, meaning to order. Betsy, would you please call the roll?
Note that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Need a motion to approve our agenda this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. Second?
Second.
Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Betsy, would you please call?
All okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? I think we don't have anything coming out of closed session tonight. So we move to communications. Good news, recognition of state qualifiers for the GHS cross-country team.
It's my pleasure to introduce Cross Country Coach Mike Garber to recognize his athletes who had an incredible season both on the boys and girls side, and well-deserving some recognition.
All right. Two times in two years, I get to speak in front of you wonderful people. It's a great day to be a runner at Glenwood High School. And some of the names you see up here, you saw from last season, some of them are new, but both the guys' team and the young ladies' team had fantastic seasons. The young ladies started off the season with high hopes. At the end of the season, we sustained some injury, we sustained some sickness, and it did not pan out the way we had hoped to. But we did have the depth and we had the ability to kind of put it all together at the state meet and run a fantastic 16th place in the state of Illinois. Now, for two-way cross-country, those who don't know, cross-country in the state of Illinois is one of the premier sports. We're not really a football state, we're not really a soccer state, it's a running state. Some of the nationally ranked runners come from this state and are running professionally and collegiately across the country. We have, on the girls' side, a championship team for the conference, a championship team for the region, a championship team for the section, and those were three fantastic victories for our girls going into the end of the season. On the gentlemen's side, we had a very great outlook on the season. Some seniors that came in with great mileage, some kids that came in from their freshman year, ready to excel and run their best. But if you looked at our squad at the end of the season, you saw crutches and kids with boots on their feet and all sorts of stuff. In fact, if you look back at the 1300s, we had like walking pneumonia going on. For some reason, these old plagues are coming back and hitting our squad and bringing us down a little bit. But no team, I don't think, in the area, maybe even in the state, has a group of kids that can plug in. One person goes down, somebody else stepped up. Another person goes down, somebody else stepped up. Immediately, the next meet, some of these guys that maybe never expected to run postseason ran phenomenally. Guys, girls, didn't matter. We had a great group, still have a great group, and we're looking forward to track season. So, thank you for your recognition. I'll hand out the certificates to these young men and women. Thank you very much. Michael Rogers. Justin Hollinshead. Paul Gigante. John Durk. Landon Skeller. Sam Rapp. Jack Carner. Jacob Olson. Jacob Thornton.
Not here.
Eli Rees. On the girls' side, Caroline Burrow. Cassie Garn. Erica Rideout. Taylor Johnson. Rachel Edmister. Not here. Conley Leaks. Not here. Donovan Hanson. Monty Flynn. And I'll take these with me and hand them out to the rest of them. Thank you guys very much, we appreciate it. The rest of them.
We'll have them stand up. You guys stand up like in front of the table so Mr. Pritchett can get your picture. And Mr. Garber, Coach Garber does this all by himself, so round of applause to Mr. Garber, too.
Yep.
Go ahead, Doc.
Do the board members stand up?
He was gonna slide that one. Go, Sam.
I guess we're right here. The board members.
I can't see them. I just can't see.
Look at Joe with the paper.
How pretty. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming. Oh, somebody, Caroline. You know who that is? I can't remember. Might have been Landon. Thanks for coming, guys. Great job on your great two minutes. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
That one time.
Thank you. Let's take cross-country as a top sport.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, continuing with communications. Item 4.2, good news, geothermal grant submission.
Mr. Stuva's here.
Always enjoy being under the good news part. Very briefly, Rural Electric was able to help secure a $50,000 GeoAlliance grant, and we were also able to help secure a $74,000 grant through our power supplier, the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency. And in 2011, the school district also received a $20,800 grant from IMEA RECC as well. So I'd like to introduce Nancy from our statewide association, and she has a few comments to make on behalf of the GeoAlliance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. This is what I would do with students. Well, first of all, I want to commend you for selecting geothermal technology for your schools. These GeoAlliance checks have really been extremely popular with schools. Of the 51 grants we've given out, more than a third of them have went to schools, and so we've been really pleased with that because schools have the opportunity to see so much savings. When you compare an old boiler to the new geothermal system, I don't have to tell you that that makes a big difference. Also, it makes a difference in comfort for your students and for the teachers, so it's a much better opportunity for learning. And I'm just very glad to be here tonight to give the $50,000 check with David or everyone.
I'm there, too.
And on behalf of the Association of Illinois Electric Cooperatives and Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation, the foundation funds the grants, the association, we've been the administrators of the fund, and we pass down these grants to cooperatives such as Rural Electric Convenience, and they go ahead and pass them out to folks like you for not-for-profit and public entities for the geothermal systems. And I think that's about all I have to say, but congratulations, and we're really glad to be here tonight. Any questions about geothermal or geothermal? Just to get out of here. And I've got this, I don't know if you guys.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We'd like to take a quick picture, if that's okay.
And I have a big, you know, I think it's just.
Oh, yes, you have a big check.
I have a big check and a little check. I'm gonna give that to you, I'm gonna thank you.
Let's go right over here.
Sometimes it's better if you're not in the.
Let's get the Bull Chatham behind us here.
There you go. The rest of the board's behind us. Do you guys mind standing, too? Then you can be in the picture.
Uh, let's go.
You should be in the picture, too.
I'll hold on to the side. Don't worry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you shouldn't. That's what I'm gonna tell you.
No, I know. I never. Did you get it?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. You bet.
You bet. You bet. Lisa.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. You bet. No problem. Enjoy meeting you today.
My pleasure.
What do we do? Or do we need to go over to the desk?
You sure you don't want to stick?
You can start handling the arms.
Do you want to keep the big check?
Got to take mine.
Oh, sure.
There you go.
Unless you need to reuse it, yeah.
Nope, nope.
That'd be great.
Thank you. I don't want Carrie to have to.
I know. Thank you.
Hard cash.
Yeah, have them come back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So I think that this is a credit to, Carrie just informed me that these dollars are used to offset operational costs in the district, and it's important that our facilities area, you know, work with our architects and planners and engineers on the types of programs that are eligible for these grants and dollars so that we can use any and all available resources to offset the operations of the district. And this is, you know, $50,000 is a lot of money, and the $74,000 that came in at the end of August from the municipal league is also very, very important to us. So I'm thanking you, everyone in the district, for your work in helping us to qualify for these types of grants. More good news, the Ball Chatham Educational Foundation, Education Foundation, 7th Annual Titan Track.
This is always a great event because the kids, actually, that you just saw here, are usually out running after their state event, and we have all, you know, many, many families show up and students, and it's just a really great event that the foundation puts on. You know, I know many of you either run that event or come and support it or write a check for it and volunteer your time, and so it's a fabulous event because it brings out families. And for something like a walk for our students is pretty neat to see. So every year, we have about 300, and again, that same happened this year. Even though it was very cold out, it was a great event. It wasn't windy, so even though it was cold, we had a lot of people show up, and we have so many sponsors that are, you know, listed there and on the shirts and everything, too. Huge thanks to them. Power Works always puts on the Titan Trot, which is a great event, led by some of our high school students. The cross-country team, the one-mile trot for the little ones, which is neat because they get to be involved in that. It's neat to watch them, they release a balloon on their, as they head out, and we had, some of our students helped lead that, and we have, you know, our two big sponsors for that event are RW Trucksil and O'Shea Builders that give quite a bit for that. So, thank you to everybody, and the foundation, our, you know, volunteers who spend lots and lots and lots of time for our school district, so we appreciate all that they do.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah.
Four, got four good news, and to talk about this a little bit, most of you see us at the board meetings once a month for anywhere from three to six hours or whatever the amount of time might be depending on what we're doing. But there's also a lot of other work that goes into being on the board, the preparation for the meeting, continually trying to stay up to date with what is happening with the Illinois Association of School Boards, with ISB. There are committees, there's policy committees, there's finance committees, there are occasional meetings we have to come in in between for certain matters. In addition to that, there are conferences, there are other regional meetings that board members attend, there's continuing education, there's basic education, and it takes a lot of time. And Lisa Weitzel has spent a tremendous amount of time attaining master board member status of the Illinois Association of School Boards, and it's just been reaffirmed for this year as well. So it's, there's a lot of coursework that has to be done, and it's a lot of work on understanding of good governance, understanding school district finance and budgeting and policies, and just trying to gather the resources, and Lisa really spends a lot of time, she's committed to this district and shows that with her time. And I'd like to thank Lisa and congratulate her on confirmation and reaffirmation of master board member status. Congratulations. And now we come to citizens. Opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any concerning any agenda topic. Anyone here tonight want to talk to the board regarding an agenda topic? All right. Next, we move to five consent agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to pull anything from the consent agenda? We have 5.1 through 5.12. I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Thank you, Brandon. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Betsy?
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Six-two, resignation of Chatham Elementary kindergarten teacher and team leader.
I've known Laura Shidi and her family since we moved to town, and I, it's just, I just want to say it's going to be a real loss to the district to see her leave. It's been, I remember touring when we first moved here, touring Chatham Elementary and going down to Laura's classroom, and she was just so distinctive, even then, before our children were even at school. She's done an awful lot for this district, and she's been an amazing mentor to fellow teachers, she's been an amazing union leader, and I'm just gonna be really sorry to see her leave.
Usually, when we have a retiring teacher or staff member at the end of the year, we get to celebrate them and talk about and share stories, and unfortunately, because, you know, her family is relocating, maybe she'll come back in this, when we do the end-of-the-year breakfast, but we don't get to give that conversation district-wide. So I think it's important that we point out what Laura has done for us, not just as a teacher, obviously, but as a leader in our association, the fact that we have such good relationships with the teachers, and we've been able to talk about some very difficult conversations in our budget reductions, and throughout several, I don't even know how many contracts she's negotiated, but she has been someone that I look to for expertise, and I know that the administrative staff feels the same way, and her colleagues, too. So we will miss Laura and her family because they're a big pillar in our community, so.
And, Mr. President, one of the administrative staff wanted to say a few words.
You can say something. Yeah.
I know, I knew it at the beginning because it's an agenda item, but I really want to say something. I didn't plan this, so I'm gonna try not to be emotional. But I've known Laura for 12 years, and both of my children had Laura as a teacher, we're blessed to have her. And I remember the day when I was in Kim's office when we found out that she was leaving us, and we talked about the huge loss for Chatham Elementary. It's not just a loss for Chatham Elementary, it is without a doubt a loss for our entire district. She has touched so many people in so many ways, so many families, colleagues, administrators. Every year, I speak to our new teachers, and I talk to them about the impact that they make on children and on families, that it is the greatest opportunity that we have, the gift that we have, to make a difference in a child's life every day. And I tell them how their goal is to be unforgettable, to be that teacher that 15 years from now, when you ask somebody, "Who was your favorite teacher in school?", that your name is the one that they remember because they will never forget them. I have no doubt that Laura will be unforgettable to my children, to me, and to our district. And she is the epitome of being unforgettable, and she will truly be missed. So I just wanted to say that publicly.
Very well said.
Very well said.
Laura was also a strong voice for the certified staff in all of the negotiations that we've been in, so she, a good communicator and very supportive of all of you, so she will be, and very fair, and so she will be missed.
So I'll make a motion to accept her resignation.
Second. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Jim. Betsy?
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Right. So that leaves two contracts, one for Jen and one for Teresa.
Correct. I, basically, I pulled these to request, if you could provide some additional information to me, Carrie, and maybe you'll have to ask for Jen's assistance as well. Her current stipend is $300 a month, but your proposal is to make it $400. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, Jen, do you have, and I'm just asking.
I have to do it. Okay. First of all.
No, no, okay, Carrie, okay, Carrie, do you know how many miles per month Jen travels?
I have not had her log those.
Do you, would you ask?
Is that what you're asking for, the data?
I'm just merely asking for some data.
So, to clarify, so we're all, what we're talking about is a stipend in the contract for personal use of car for in-district travel.
Correct.
And past practice has been to award or grant a stipend for select positions for that.
Right.
And in Jen's current contract, that's expired, her prior contract, that stipend was $300 per month, and the recommended action for this contract is to increase that to $400 a month.
Correct. Do we have a motion?
Rick, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contracts of Jen Barham and Teresa Smith as presented this evening.
Actually, you can call for a question, which means to end the debate.
All right.
No, you're, in act, okay.
There's none.
Okay, you're calling for a motion before the debate can occur. Well, I'll just, yeah.
He makes a motion, and then it's a second, and then there's discussion.
Well, actually, there's two portions of the, regarding Jen's contract that.
Well, there's a motion.
There's a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
So now there's discussion. Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion, and so we're clear, there's a motion and a second to approve the contracts as presented for Jennifer Barham and Teresa Smith. All right, and now?
Well, my, my points are these, merely that, my points are these, in that having just attended IASB conference this past weekend, and listening to Sarah Grunbuchek, the Associate Director and Legal Counsel of the IESA, recommend to the attendees that the contracts now use mileage reimbursements instead of stipends. That was one of her main points. I would like to basically abide by that and revert, well, in essence, use mileage reimbursement as the means by which employees have their mileage and expenses reimbursed.
Is that for just these two contracts or all contracts?
All contracts, from henceforth, when they come to, for, when we have a chance to move away from stipends to mileage reimbursements, based on her recommendation, that's what I would like to do.
All right, other discussion?
I have a question on a contract that raises vacation time from 20 to 28.
And in, again, it's Jen Barham's contract, in the prior expired contract, 20 days were included, and there's a request here to increase the vacation to 28 days.
Correct. And as of right now, we only have one person in this district, 28 days of vacation time, and I don't believe we, at this point, we need a second one.
Other questions?
I'm not disagreeing with an increase, that's just the amount that it takes it to.
All right.
If the board votes no on this poll, what does that mean for the contracts?
We'll table them and bring them back in December. And because, we would need to bring them back to you for a curveball in December.
Either in current form or amended form.
Right, right, right.
So the motion, clarify for me what the motion is.
So there's a motion? Do you want to explain this?
Well, essentially, you're just, your motion is to table these, or to have, to request that the administration go back to the employees.
No, they don't, my motion, my motion is to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My motion is to approve the contracts as presented in the board's jacket tonight.
So if it's not approved, if the motion is to approve them and it's not approved, as presented, then I would take it back to the employees and work with them on bringing something forward.
And if it is approved, then the contracts stand as?
As presented.
Susan, you pulled Teresa's and Jen's, was there a?
Well, only because, only because I, I would like, rather than stipends for reimbursement of mileage, it's the format, I'd rather.
You'd rather reimburse mileage than stipends.
Correct.
Are there other, other stipends, and other, out of these folks, are there other stipends?
In-district stipend.
So?
So any in-district travel, they would turn in a mileage reimbursement form for. And that's something that we can, we can discuss with the two employees.
Could you tell me why the past practice has been not to have mileage reimbursed specifically?
It was my knowledge that a couple of superintendents ago, the philosophy was that, you know, that...
And in, again, it's Jen Barham's contract, in the prior expired contract, 20 days were included, and there's a request here to increase the vacation to 28 days.
Correct. And as of right now, we only have one person in this district, 28 days of vacation time, and I don't believe we, at this point, we need a second one.
Other questions?
I'm not disagreeing with an increase, that's just the amount that it takes it to.
All right.
If the board votes no on this poll, what does that mean for the contracts?
We'll table them and bring them back in December. And because we would need to bring them back to you for an approval in December.
Either in current form or amended form.
Right, right, right.
So the motion, clarify for me what the motion is.
The motion?
So there's a motion, do you want to explain this?
Well, essentially, you're just, your motion is to table these, or to have, to request that the administration go back to the employees?
No, no, my motion is to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My motion is to approve the contracts as presented in the board's jacket tonight.
So if it's not approved, if the motion is to approve them and it's not approved, as presented, then I would take it back to the employees and work with them on bringing something forward.
And if it is approved, then the contracts stand as?
As presented.
Susan, you pulled Teresa's and Jen's, was there a?
Well, only because, only because I would like, rather than stipends for reimbursement of mileage, it's the format, I'd rather?
You'd rather reimburse mileage than stipends?
Correct.
Are there other stipends, and other, out of these folks, are there other stipends?
In-district stipend.
So?
So any in-district travel, they would turn in a mileage reimbursement form for? And that's something that we can discuss with the two employees.
Could you tell me why the past practice has been not to have mileage reimbursed specifically?
It was my knowledge that a couple of superintendents ago, the philosophy was that, you know, the time that it takes to record those miles, and, you know, it just was listed as a benefit for the former special ed director, the former assistant superintendent, the former superintendent, two superintendents ago.
So if Jen were to get called, "I need you at GIS immediately because we have a special ed concern," she would have to log in her mileage or?
Or upon return.
Or upon return.
And then turn it in by month.
So stipends are an easier way, but they're not exact.
Right.
They're not, you know, per mile, and in some instances, the stipend can be more than the standard IRS reimbursement rate, or in some instances, it could be, it could be less.
Is my understanding that past practice has also been that it's in-district mileage, but also if you, Carrie, or Teresa or Jen should need to go to Springfield for something, attend a meeting within Sangamon County, typically those are not, just past practice has been that those are not turned in for reimbursement?
Right, right.
So it's doing the job within the confines of this area.
Right.
So if it's beyond, I mean, is there a point?
Yeah, I mean, any trips, like, for example, to Chicago or something like that, there would be a fleet car available, and if one is not, then they would turn in mileage request forms.
But it's kind of one of those unwritten policies?
But if they were attending, you know, if they needed to attend meetings in the evening, or go home and come back, and, you know, attend meetings in the evening, or attend a function wherever, I mean, those are legitimate miles incurred, I mean, they're doing their job when they come back to the school and give a presentation.
Just from school, yeah.
I'm thinking back on the negotiations we had, aren't there specific requirements? It seems to me we had a lot of discussion on taxes, that you cannot be reimbursed to go from your home to your place of business? Correct. Whether that would be during the day or coming back for a meeting?
For a meeting, right.
Well, okay, but attending a professional organization, that is now the, if Jen leaves the school district and goes to a professional organization that evening at a different place, I think that's fair. I don't know what the tax code is, I just note that that was a very specific and detailed discussion we had in negotiations.
I mean, unless they're going to, like, Chicago or something. Out of mileage, no.
What was that, Rick? Sorry, we were just asking about a conference in Chicago, for example, and that's out of district travel, and that would be mileage reimbursement? Or a fleet car. Use the car, right. All right, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the contracts as presented for Jennifer Barham and Teresa Smith. Betsy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Carter?
Yes.
Kup?
No.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Thank you all. Old business, board goals. We've been, um?
It's just discussion tonight.
Yeah, it's just discussion tonight. We've been working for quite some time on board goals, and we had Larry Dirks come in from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then Dean Langdon came in and really helped us, but they looked at the structure of the vision and the goals of the district and found that we were lacking at the board level with certain goals. We started talking about this a year and a half ago, and had some very good cooperative meetings, we've asked the administrators to come in and to participate and help us try to find some connection and some integration with what the board is thinking and what the administration is doing so that we are aligned from the board level to, you know, all the way through the district to every single employee. And it was amazing, we had, you know, a couple of meetings, but we kept coming up with the same things, themes, even with different board members participating, and individuals who were running for board, individuals who left the board, and different administrators from time to time, and even a different moderator. So it was nice to see some consistency in what we were thinking at the balcony level. In our last meeting, we all sat down and talked about what was good and what we would like to change, and put those comments on each one. We then put together a committee to meet and kind of summarize everything, and Linda Carter, she's done a very nice job of helping pull this all together and to bring this, and what we've come up with is really a combination of everyone's input, and we've, and I want to open this so I can read? Can I say something real quick? Yeah. Rick, I think also that, I want to thank the administrators, the principals that were there that helped out with this too, because we look at some of these things in one way, and we're not out there in the buildings, and we're not out there in the trenches with them, and they added a whole different perspective to these, and I just want to thank you guys for your input and the value you brought to the whole process. It was an eye-opener in some respects, because, you know, we sit up here and we think we know it all, but we obviously don't, and we, that's why we have all you guys, so I appreciate that.
And it made it a fun meeting for once.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was all a good conversation.
So Linda has done a tremendous amount of work organizing this, and what we've come up with is, you know, what I'm calling three categories that encompass what we're trying to do as a district, and those categories really are ranked in the, in the order of importance, and this theme came through, but achievement was the number one goal of all of the stakeholders in the district. And then we had our vision statements to go along with the achievement, and then goals, and we're putting some indicators on there, how can we measure these goals? How do we know we're accomplishing something? How can we, can we track our success, or how can we identify opportunities for improvement? So we've got the goals and the indicators, and second, we had, you know, resources, we have to have funds, we have to have budgets, we have to try to live within the dollars that we have, and then we also have, you know, community relations, we want to involve all stakeholders, we want to make sure that we've got ongoing communication, that we have a welcoming environment for everyone. So this is the compilation and the bringing together of all those goals, ideas, concepts of much, of much work. Some of the deltas or the changes, and a lot of those were pretty consistent from what we saw, that, you know, some were restating the same thing, so we got rid of those because we already were covering them. Others were potentially involving the district, involving the board with some management reporting or some management functions that really are not board level, we want to make sure that we keep those functions in the district office and in the classroom, and make sure the board, you know, monitors what's going on with the indicators that we have, so that the board can stay end-focused and driving toward the future. So with that, any comments, conversation, want to talk about?
I just have a clarification to ask. So Carrie, did you work with your staff in developing criteria under the respective indicators? Did your staff help put some of this information together?
The indicators were just from the group of four that worked on these, and these were just draft, they were just ideas for, we didn't say this was written fast, we were just trying to brainstorm some ideas of ways that those areas could each be measured, so that was just an initial draft.
So then you're going to get together with your administrators and hammer out some details, is that correct?
Yeah, so for example, one of them, it says an assessment from the directors, scroll up just a little bit, Betsy, we had talked about, oh, I'm sorry, down a little bit, we had talked about on goal 2.4, that, you know, that each director could help give for that goal area, help find some piece, some sort of a SWOT analysis or an assessment from their department that they could present at some point in the year to the board to show how we're, where we are on those goals. So we added the numbers numbering system on there because we thought that it might be something that we could put on a board agenda item, that this is in reference to goal number 2.4. So it just kind of crops references, and then with Board Docs, because Board Docs is a great tool, we can even go back in time and say, "How many times did we address that goal?" Well, maybe we weren't discussing it enough, you know, because we only addressed it maybe one time, and maybe, you know, goal 2.2, we addressed, you know, multiple times throughout the year. So we like the idea of having some sort of a placeholder on Board Docs where we could say, "This is the goal that we're trying to address," kind of always bring us back to that.
Actually, Susan and I attended a session, which talked about actually restructuring your agenda to follow your goals, as opposed to old business, new business, and so you know that everything that you do, how it relates to one of your district goals.
That goal, absolutely.
And I liked that, I mean, and it said, you know, like, using these, you can also have a clickable link to the goal if you chose to leave it like as is or something. So it was just, it was interesting, and I think it helps, I think it helps the community also see, well, why are we doing this?
Right.
How does this, you know, affect what we're doing?
Exactly.
And then it's kind of a quick snapshot, you know, if everything you see is under one section, or there's nothing under achievement, well, isn't it why we're here?
Right, absolutely, absolutely, I think it's a great idea.
I guess my question is, so have you, have the administrators looked at this list and said, you know, "I think we could do, add this or add that"?
Not yet, not yet. Because this is just for discussion, we thought we'd bring it back, as the group of four, we thought we would bring it back in December again, so this is just the initial discussion, so other than when they met with you guys, they're at the same place you are, where you guys, you know, had that go around, and, you know, that's where they are too, they haven't given input to this yet.
I'd like to speak to that.
They're just ideas.
What the word "go around," I don't know, that could have several different meanings. Yeah, but we all sat, the administrators had a lot of input into the original goals and vision statements that we had, and then looking at their, the delta analysis, it was pretty easy to incorporate what the administrators felt was important, and this document here, as on the screen, and as in Board Docs, is a board, the board goals, the board vision that was developed with the administrators and with representatives of the community vehicles.
Right. I think they nicely tie together all of those goals that we've been talking about, but I like the idea of, and I think the group that night liked the idea of three different areas. It kind of makes it more palatable, it makes it, it just, I think pulls everything together so you can see those three different areas, and it was really at the end of that meeting that, I think it was Lisa, said, "I see three different areas," and it just, I think visually you can really understand it more easily.
Well, and Dean told us over and over again, you have way too many, too.
Six or seven.
Way too, yeah, way too many.
Right, we just felt unfocused, and I think this helps us get focused, it's all there, it's just in three different categories, so we can see kind of a vision area under each of those categories.
It's a lot less confusing and a lot clearer.
I thought so too.
It's just?
I thought so too.
I like the format, good job.
Yeah, thank you, Linda. It was a starting point for discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
That Rick and I were tasked with the job of writing it, and when we got to the meeting, Carrie was very clear and said, "These are board goals." Carrie and Teresa were there as resources, but these are the goals that the board and represented by Rick and you.
And then ideally, we set our administrative goals based on these goals, so that's the work that the buildings do in terms of, like, for example, achievement when they have their conversations, and that's why we tried to, like I said, looked at some of the indicators, but those are just, those, the indicators really, look at those as a brainstorm, you know, it was just kind of us throwing out ideas on, "How could we measure this? What reports do we have that could measure this?" So that was just kind of, we listed those just more as a conversation starter, I think, really, is what I felt like it was. So those are open to discussion.
I think we've got a great start, I mean, it's more than just an initial start in this thing, it's a great start.
Absolutely.
Because it's great to have goals, but if you don't have, you don't know how you're going to measure them, then they're not worth the paper they're written on, really. You have to have that indicators on.
To me, the indicators aren't as important as obviously the goals, but because, for example, our indicators in my mind would be changing as things change throughout the district, for example, similar to how we set student achievement goals, and it doesn't really matter what test you give, you're going to have a certain idea of what your achievement goal should be. So, you know, they might change throughout, that, "Oh, well, we used to use this report to show us how we were, whether or not we were achieving goal 1.2, but now we've got a better tool," and so those, to me, those indicators are kind of open to, you know, they might be changed as we get new tools, as tools are, you know, phased in or out, those aren't as, nearly as important as obviously the goals themselves.
So from a board's perspective, what else needs to be done on this thing? If there are goals?
I mean, if there was any debate or want to go with it something?
I know it's a discussion item, but?
It's, I think we would need to bring them back and, oh, to accept the goals, you know, either as written or amended, and, you know, we should put them in, you know, our district, you know, vision, and, you know, put them in that placeholder where the goals are, the goals should be, kind of brush up that, freshen that, and?
I think we've been aiming for this document for a while now, so that we can get it in place and then refresh it down the road.
For a few years.
So how close are we to putting this in writing? Is there any?
Next month, I guess.
At the group meeting, we talked about December.
Are you asking, is there any reason why we can't do it now?
No, I'm saying, is there any discussion as to what is on these three, goals, achievement, resource, community relations, that any of us feel like we need to change right now? Or are we content with them, or?
Yeah, I think Linda did a great job, or Lyndon, sorry.
So we're getting real close to putting this to rest, huh?
Right. And the good thing is, I think the board's been, you know, we have been kind of adhering to these goals without even thinking about it, because we've been talking about it for so long, I mean, we're committed to achievement, and we're, you know, working hard on the resources and the finances in the district, and we're really, you know, on the right path, and this is just putting pen to paper and trying to put that down. Carrie and Teresa, we're very helpful with how do we monitor their stuff, and what is, what are we doing right now, and how can we use what, you know, Rising Star or the report card or the stuff that's out there without adding any extra administrative duties on to the staff, so they can keep doing what they're doing, which is, you know, contributing to the achievement goal of the district. And we can talk about this when we're voting on subjects, you know, "Okay, this aligns with our achievement goal, and yes, we're spending money, but it aligns with the achievement goal, and this aligns with the resources, with facilities, with IT, whatever it is." So with that, Steve's asking, is there, do we want to change anything, or do we want to, you know, put this on consent agenda or discussion item for the next meeting?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the administrators can work with Carrie, that they can, you know, have whatever sort of fleshing out that they want to add, you know, for their portion.
Indicators. The indicators, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could do that. We could put that on your December agenda then, and have them give a little bit more input to indicators.
Correct.
Because I see that as staff work, that indicators is the staff work. Board goals, we won't touch, because I think those are yours.
Right.
And then, but we can work on, you know, does it make sense to say Rising Star, or do we really want to say school improvement? Because Rising Star is a resource we use for school improvement, so, you know, we can kind of tweak that language together to make it make sense for us too.
Right, right.
And I think that those indicators, I'm going to speak for Steve here, because actually Steve, inappropriate sidebar, but if the administrators would look at these indicators and say, "Can we measure these indicators to make sure that we can show progress or growth or measure?"
And what was the other, are they realistic and do we have the resources?
Are they SMARCOs, what's, was it strategic, measurable, achievable?
Realistic and timely. Realistic and timely.
That would be good.
Right, anything else on that? Much progress, so thank you all. Thank you. I echo Jim, thank you. All of our administrators who participated, very helpful. Moving on to eight, financial, 8.1. So resolution declaring the intention to issue working cash fund bonds for the purposes, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund. So this goes back to our discussion in the last meeting with the need to clear out the negative balance in Fund 61. And what needs to be done there, and what we talked about was from the original, and that's a negative balance, it's carried forward from past projects. What needs to be done is that negative balance needs to be cleared up. And what we discussed was reducing the amount of the $33 million bond issued by $1.7 million. I'm sorry, $35 million. And reducing it by $1.7 million and holding that as unsold, approved but unsold bonds. But then sell working cash bonds in that amount so that we can replenish the working cash fund in order to transfer that money to the Fund 61 to clear out that negative balance. And it's important to do that because now as we're ending and coming to the end of our construction projects, that fund does not flush anymore with reserves. It's being spent on our projects and our building initiatives. So that, we're coming to the point where we're going to get to a negative balance and we can't have that. We've got to have a positive. So the reserves have been drawn down to the point that we now have to act. And at our last meeting, Stifel talked about the timeline of when it's done. So tonight is the night to talk about this portion and pass the resolution and get those bonds out for sale. Robin was here discussing our audit and also talked about the importance of, and we asked the question, we talked about using funds from another account and possibly paying that off. But that would be detrimental to our financial rankings because it would, it would be devastating to our financial rankings, which then affects our bond rate, the report, the annual financial report of the district and also the credit rating. So we don't want to damage the, that. So the solution, the best solution of all the options looked at was to reduce that $35 million, kind of move it over here to take care of this pre-existing debt that's been out there. And it's from, and the accounting's all there, it's from Glenwood Elementary School, some of the overruns there that were just never, never funded. We've paid the bills, we've written the checks, but we just accounted for it in that fund without ever the funds being transferred in there to pay them because it was within the balance and it, you just never saw it because they are co-mingled with other, with Fund 60. So you never saw a negative balance on the total. So with that, discussion on... I have a question, yeah. I have a question. We're, you know, those bonds were sold, the $35 million bonds were sold for improvements and construction, as construction bonds. And we've checked with legal counsel that this is something that we can...
We just would leave them authorized but unsold. So $1.7 million out of that $35 million would be left. We just wouldn't sell those. And the reason that we're talking about not selling those is that we want to maintain that 70 cent levy, bond and interest levy that we'd always promised the voters we would do. So rather than selling working cash bonds outside of that, which we could do, where you could sell working cash bonds outside of the $35 million and go ahead and sell all of those, instead, to keep that 70 cent bond and interest levy the same, just leaving $1.7 million of that working cash, or I'm sorry, of the $35 million authorized but unsold. So you're just selling a different type of bond because you can't take those bonds and pay off this. We did talk to legal counsel, to bond counsel about, you can't use the $35 million to pay off this debt that you already have because the bond proposition said that it was, you know, for additions and improvements in and about the district's facilities. And we had already built that building when we sold those. So we can't take that 30, part of that $35 million and make it into a payment for this debt that we have. Instead, we have to sell working cash bonds or deplete your working cash, which, as Rick mentioned, would have a negative impact on your financial profile because of your days cash on hand and your fund balance revenue ratios. And then, which then has an impact on your credit rating. And then while you're selling bonds, that's not a good thing to have an impact on your credit rating because even a small impact is significant when you look at the dollars.
I think it's important to note that the board could vote to issue $1.7 million in working cash in addition to the already approved. Board has the authority to do that in addition to the $35 million. But it's not the intent to go over the voter dollars in that. And we're trying to clear up that negative balance in Fund 61 that's been there for quite some time. So in order to stay at that $35 million level, reduce it by $1.7, that amount remains unsold there and it's issued in working cash. And then working cash is transferred in to clear up that balance and then that's...
Because essentially, we were trying to make sure that on your bond schedule, it stays at 70 cents for your bond and interest tax rate, which is what we had talked to the voters about back when we sold those. But like Rick said, you have, you have the ability to go above that in a different bond or in a different sale. But, you know, we had always said, "We'll maintain that 70 cents and we don't want to go above that." So that was our goal.
I go back to a document that we all approved back on August 22, 2013, that was the GES revised costs. And in that, we looked at an over/under budget on that of $231,000. Yet we still had $1.7 million sitting out there. And this was done by Mr., by Patrick Murphy, if I remember right.
I'd like to make that in that regard. Well, the two aspects as far as looking at the total accounting picture of Glenwood Elementary School. One is the cash flow aspect. That's what, that's what this is, this resolution is now dealing with. Patrick and I never looked at the cash flow aspect of this. So I was quite surprised when Nate brought forth the schedule showing that there was a, there was a difference between the calculated expense that Patrick and I spent so much time on with Rick and Carrie versus the cash flow portion of it, which was never looked at, unfortunately, because I assumed that our worksheet that we had worked on so carefully had, had been incorporated into the numbers of the general ledger. And that was not the case. So basically, we, the document for Glenwood Elementary School was created from source documents. That's like individual vendor invoices. So we got that correct number, but then that corrected number was never recorded on the general ledger from which the cash flow aspect must be derived. So this is really just finishing up part two.
And to go a little further on that, it was my understanding that when, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but when Nate, you know, brought these schedules and comparisons to us to talk about this fund, he did not go all the way back to look for the corresponding journal entries because those entries would have taken place over
A long time.
A number of different years, budget years, financial years. So a forensic analysis of all of that, you know, was, was not done. We did the analysis on the actual, as you say, the vendor receipts to come up with a true cost of Glenwood Elementary. Now, the internal accounting of it, and I believe it was, was Robin or Bond, I think it was Robin who said that Fund 61 is, you know, it's a good way of accounting for the total cost. But it's, but now we've got to, you know, make sure that those dollars are transferred at the, into the appropriate accounts to get that cleared up. And because our balance is now lower, we're seeing that we have to get this done to make sure we don't dip into the negatives. We can't do that.
Is there any, so you're saying we're voting to authorize what we're not really going to sell bonds? But by voting to authorize, is there a potential for a future board to go ahead and sell it? Or does that expire at a certain time?
Your authorization for your $35 million or the $1.7?
$1.7.
Now, you're going to, we do have, we do have a resolution to call a public hearing on as well. So you would authorize the sale of the bonds?
Of $1.7 million of working, of working cash.
Of actually selling those bonds.
Let's just do it. But I mean, but we're saying that, what we're, but we're saying that...
But then, 35, out of the $35 million, though, $1.7 of that is left unsold. The public has authorized it, okay.
Right, sorry. I guess, thank you, Steve. I guess, so what I'm saying, so we are saying, this board is saying to the public that we are not going to spend $1.7 of the $35 million in order to keep the tax levy the same. But could a future board change their mind?
They would have the, I mean, they have the authorization to do so because the voters allowed that. So they, but there is a timeline at which it expires and that is...
I believe it's three years from when they...
Yeah.
Was it November 9th?
I was thinking five.
One more year.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, is to that...
We can still approve the $35 million.
You could.
We could, but what we're saying tonight...
This doesn't stop them that way.
No.
But what we're saying, but the seven of, I mean, this sitting board is saying that we're, that's not our intent.
Right.
Right, that's not our intent at all to spend more than $35 million. The intent is to not go over $35 million, you know, at all.
So that we keep that 70 cent.
Right.
Now, the thing is, we can't, we have to deal with this $1.7 million.
We don't have a choice.
Right, we don't have a choice. We have to deal with that. We can't use the $35 million, any part of the $35 million to pay for that.
Correct, but we're going to, we're looking at borrowing the full $1.7. Was there any other way that we had any money laying around that we could use part of that $1.7 covered out of some cash we already had? Because I'm looking at this sheet from PMA and the money we're going to borrow for the $1.7 has a 4% interest rate and all our other bond money has 2.18, 2.4, 2.98. So we're paying a considerable amount more for the interest on that $1.7.
We don't know that number yet, do we? Didn't they put that in as a placeholder?
That's a plug number.
Right.
I'm guessing that's going to be high. But the other factor to consider, working cash bonds are fully taxable bonds.
Right.
So it's going to be a higher interest rate. Amounts were taxed them. So you expect a higher rate of return on it.
It is higher, but that was just a placeholder.
But we got to pay it, though.
Right.
Yeah.
In interest. That's correct. At the tune of about $714,000. So that puts that $1.7 to like 2.4. And that's why I just...
2.14, wait, no, right, no, 2.4.
If there was any way, maybe we could use a little cash that we had laying around somewhere instead of borrowing the full $1.7 million. I would not recommend dipping into resorts any further. They're that low? They're very low, yes.
Because the only fund we could take it from would be the Ed Fund.
Working cash, or Ed.
Working cash.
So the danger of, and as discussed at the last meeting, the danger of, well, the outcome of using existing cash would reduce those balances. So at the end of the year, your financial rating goes down to, so...
I understand you've got to fill that hole.
Right, you've got to fill the hole.
But this is cutting into our $35 million that we plan to add on class.
That's, that's our choice, right. That's our choice to do that, to not spend any more than $35 million. And this has to be fixed. This is, you know, a little unexpected. However, it needs to be dealt with in a responsible manner. And the board, you know, what we're coming to the conclusion is that we're not going to go over the $35 million, even though some of it has to be redirected to take care of this, this pre-existing, you know...
Obligation.
Obligation, right, right.
That's what it is.
Have we gone back and figured out where this, this $1.7 million, what, why it's still sitting out there? What it, you know, that's the part that I, I mean, I was under the impression and, you know, I've talked to several people about this. But that Fund 61 is kind of a placeholder, kind of an, you know, you can put things, something into that so you can see how much a project is going to cost. But it's not necessarily still hanging out there because it all, it all aggregates back to Fund 60. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So...
So your funds combined to give you what really is our capital projects fund. So Fund 60, by definition, under state rules, would be our normal fund. But yet, you're right, 61 wants a placeholder that two or three years stand. We've brought in funds, transferred funds in, paid for the projects and then we've expended the money out of that Fund 61. And $1.7 million is what remains the deficit after that project was completed.
So, well, the way I looked at it, it was more of a, as, just an example, I've got a construction project at home and I want to know, out of my, out of my $10,000 that this much went here, this much went here. So I create different, different placeholders for that. But it all goes back, it's all contained in that, in that, you know, in the checkbook. I just put it in different spots on a spreadsheet so I knew where...
So that you can pull it out.
So I can pull it together.
Right.
But that's not the way this works?
No, it is.
The $1.7. So this is saying what you did, what there was in your, in your accounting fund, you said, "Okay, we're going to budget $10,000 for this project." You budgeted $10,000 for the project. And then every time you spent something on that project, you accounted for it as a negative number there. I spent $1,000 on wood, you know, and $1,000 on carpet. So now you're $8,000. So what this is saying is that you spent more than $10,000. You spent...
$1.7, not $2.4 we needed to.
That's not the way I was trying to explain it, but that's...
Right.
And it was written on... Because there is, I mean, in school finance, there is no...
61.
61. It's just a placeholder.
It's part of Fund 60. So it's all, it's all the same pot of money for capital projects. Split out one piece of that for GES specific.
Does that tell us that, I mean, on this spreadsheet that was done back and, or was presented to the board back in August of 13, it was, the total costs were $18,173,000 and some. Does that mean that we were $1.7 million over that number? That we're almost $20 million for that school?
But you're at 18, 18 plus your 3.6 for land, which is...
But the 18 is not a total cost.
But I'm not worried about the land because the land was a separate, a separate entity.
But you want to know if that $1.7 million is in addition to the 18?
To the 18, yeah.
Is it? Is it in addition to the 18 million?
I believe, and again, I don't have this spreadsheet with me and I can't vouch for the accuracy of those numbers off here. But I believe $1 million of that was for the land, just for the actual building.
No, that's...
$3.7 million on the entire lot of our home.
Well, it's, it's in a different spot here, the cost for the land.
Like Susan said, that 18 is the number that she and Patrick had dug into all invoices and everything, so...
But since we still have 1.8 out there, there's nobody, or 1.7, then nobody figured it. Did it get figured in here or did it not get figured?
Well, that's exactly what Rick may mention, too. I mean, one possibility was 18, 18.2 could be low. But we didn't, I mean, we took the folder of invoices that, oh, the invoices, Bob Gilram had together in an folder and he said, "We've got to start somewhere." So we used those invoices as a starting point. Now, there might be another folder back in the back room that has more invoices in it. We don't know. But, but I, the difficulty is that there was operational funds used for the Glenwood Elementary School construction. And some of those numbers were paid for, I mean, some of the things on the 18.2 million schedule were paid from operational funds.
Right, and they were all paid, so they had to come from somewhere.
It was paid.
Some from education. from education, some from operations, or, or wherever.
Yeah, they were paid.
So, so really, I mean, all, all it means is that there was never, the total amount of funds transferred into Fund 61. There was a couple-
61, but see, 61 doesn't exist.
It's an accounting fund.
A subset of 60, 61.
Yeah, they, they, they roll together.
Yeah.
So, Fund 60 has 2.14 million dollars in it today.
How much?
2.14, 2,144,000 and change, in 60. 61 has a negative 1.9, I can't see the number here.
I think it's 1.65.
Well, can we move 60 to 61?
Okay, so one, so it's 1.7 and 2.15. So you put those two together, so the, the balance is, is the difference between the two of them, so there's a few hundred thousand dollars in, in that account.
And we can't move 60 to 61 because 60 is bond money?
It's the 35 million, or the 35.
Right, for legal reasons, we cannot, we cannot use any of the bond money to cover the deficit from Glenwood Elementary School.
So, but we, we can issue working cash, which is what we're, which is what the, where we are right now with the financial resolution.
Or another, put another way to look at it, just that we only, we only bonded 1.7 million dollars out of the entire cost of Glenwood Elementary, because the rest came from reserves.
Say that again?
It's one way of looking at it.
I mean, I suppose, you know, another way to look at it would be, is, since we paid for that school out of reserves, we only had to bond 1.7 million dollars out of the entire cost of that school?
No, that's not correct. You can't say-
Well, but we're not authorized to bond 1.7 million dollars for the construction of that school, because-
No, Glenwood Elementary, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that that's not the way it looks on paper, I'm just saying, in the, in kind of a-
Oh, explanation.
You should bond to cover that cost.
We gotta clean up the hole in our books, and this is the best way to do it for us right now. Yeah, I mean, the deficit could just as easily be in O and M or another fund.
Correct.
The bottom line is, there is a deficit, and we need to fill it.
There's a deficit that needs to be-
Right, and we're maintaining the, the tax rate that we promised the voters that we maintained.
I think that's the big thing, is that, you know, obviously, you know, all of it is important, but that we're trying to adhere to that 70 cent bond and interest tax, or bond and interest levy rate, and by doing so, saying that, you know, you as a board are saying, we will leave that authorized but unsold, 1.7 out of the 35 million, to the taxpayers.
So that may mean that there will be something we won't be able to do?
Yes.
We're gonna have to reprioritize and, and, and do what we need to do, and, and this is what we've charged Nate with doing for us, and that's to, you know, get into our books and clean up these negative balances, and, and let's get to a point where we have some, some reporting and accountability, and, and these things make sense.
But if we can't go back and see where that 1.7 million dollars came from-
We can, if you look back, Jim, I did some research, if you look back, there's a, there's like a 15 million dollar transfer at one point in time, and there's another 3-point-something million dollar transfer at another time that are put in.
3.6, that's for the land.
3.6, so that's, that's land and, and so that's 18-something right there, okay? Forget about the land, you know, and if the, the building was owned by itself was 18 million something, that the final report, there's your difference right there. That building cost more than 15 million dollars when it excluded the land, and here's the one point, and I'm rounding numbers and generalizing, but that's, that's what it is. And we paid those bills, but we never, I'd never saw another transfer into Fund 61 besides those two.
That's what this is, is a transfer.
Right, and this is a transfer into, into that-
From working cash.
In, 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 to that, to clear up the negative balance, to fill the hole.
Well, I, I still don't, I still don't see it, I see the, I still don't see it, and I'm gonna have to vote no on it.
Vote no for the existence of the deficit?
No, for this resolution.
First would be-
What would, what would you, suggestions stand, or?
Yeah, let's-
Okay, let's call a motion for that, okay.
All right, so-
The first is, to approve, the first recommendation is to approve a resolution declaring the intention to issue working cash for the, I'm sorry, I took over.
No, thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, there's two recommendations.
Okay, so the recommended action is to approve the resolution declaring the intention to issue working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of Ball Chatham CUSD 5. Resolution declaring the intention to issue working cash fund bonds of Community Unit School District Number 5, Sagamia County, Illinois, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said school district, and directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law. So this is the intention, and that's the recommendation, so I will need, we'll need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Susan, the second?
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Newses?
No.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. 8 dot 2 is now the recommended action of approving the resolution calling a public hearing to sell 1.7 million dollars in working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the Ball Chatham CUSD Number 5. Resolution calling for a public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 5, Sagamia County, Illinois, to sell 1.7 dollars, 1.7 million dollars working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said school district. I'll need a motion to approve the resolution calling for a public hearing to sell 1.7 million working cash fund bonds.
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon.
Second.
Second, thank you, Steve. Betsy, would you please call the roll?
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Newses?
No.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Thank you, all. 8.3, Nate, I assume this is you, the 2014 tax levy presentation.
Thank you, Rick. It's that time of year again, so I catered a presentation to, to walk us through the process of tax levy overall and give more specifics, as far as the information that goes into my proposed levy for the board to consider. Scroll to the next, next page there, you'll see our agenda. We'll start out with some general information, go to further detail on the process, talk about data assumptions and calculations, and then finally discuss the calendar. Some terminology to kinda go through, tax levies amount of dollars in each operating fund, a school district asks for to assist in paying the bills for the next school year. It's important to note that operating funds in terms of the tax levy really include all of our funds that we are levying for, with the exception of debt, which is actually part of the levy, but it's a separate straightforward amount that is calculated at the time we issue that particular debt. So when I talk operating funds, it really is all of our funds except debt in its own right. The levy must be approved and adopted by the last Tuesday of December and filed with the county clerk by that date. All right, next page, oh, there we go, our largest source of revenue in the district, and for the majority of districts in Illinois, is our tax levy. As you'll see in the next page, it actually accounts for about two-thirds of our total revenue. It's the most stable, most reliable source. Money does come in early, starting in May, and does go through November on our payments. We just received our last payment for the 2013 levy from Sagamia County, actually just last week. Yeah, it does assist us in paying for programs and services, starting, or excuse me, for the 2015, 2016 school year. Again, this break, this is a breakdown of our revenue by source, as of the end of the 1314 school year, you'll see again, 67% of that money is from levy, 6% from other local sources, 22% state, and another 5% in federal revenues. When we talk about the levy, it is based on our EAV, which is our equalized assessed valuation, that is the property valuation of individual and total property of a district, including both residential, farming property, and commercial, as well as industrial and other property types, and that's after the county and state equalization factors are thrown into that mix. How much EAV growth do we expect from last year? I expect marginal growth at best. Last year, we had a 2.3% increase, 2012, and a 3.01% increase in 2011, excuse me, the prior year, 2.23% in 2013. That is our total EAV growth, growth, including both the new property as well as existing EAV. I expect that growth to continue along the same trend. In fact, in our, my estimates, I would factor in 2.2%, 2.3% growth again in 2014. EAV is important, and in light of two different factors, the new construction growth is a factor of that, and the district EAV is multiplied by the tax rate per $100 of EAV to arrive at the tax extension. This chart here shows our growth in EAV over the last 10 years, with an estimated growth for 2014. You're gonna see there, in the mid 2005 to 2010 area, you have 8.87% all the way down to 3.51%, a significant decline over that timeframe. And over the last four years alone, we've been hovering at 3%, and actually closer to 2% the last three years. EAV, again, anticipated to be 690,209,258 for this year. The following page is a summary, really, of the previous page, broken out between both existing EAV and new property EAV. Again, you'll see the existing EAV there to the left, over the last 10 years, has been relatively flat. Our highest year back in 2006, a 4.3%, that has declined. Ever since 2009, we've been on the downturn, down to 0.53% for last year. I project 0.6% increase for 2014. The new EAV change there at the far right, again, a significant drop-off, 2005, 5.52%, down to a projected 1.64% growth for this year. This particular page shows our total new growth, EAV. Again, it's a pretty striking comparison over the last 10 years. You'll see our highest year, 2006, of just under 24.6 million. We ended up at 11.26 million in 2013, and I anticipate another flat growth, again, this year of $11 million. The property tax extension limitation law, PTEL for short, is the rule of law when it comes to our county, Sagamia County in particular. It's commonly called the tax cap, which is often misleading, we're not actually capping property taxes on individual properties. It merely allows a taxing district such as ourselves to receive a limited inflationary increase in tax extensions on property. Now, what is that inflationary increase? Go to the next page. It's based on the CPI, Consumer Price Index Increase for Precedent Levy Year. So our rate for this year is actually based on the end calendar year 2013 is used for the calculation. Limitation, however, does not apply to new construction, so we do receive our fair share of taxes based on new construction within our district boundaries. And one side note, there has not been a CPI of 5% since the inception of PTEL, 5% being the max increase that a district may achieve. Here's a quick county-by-county view of all the tax cap counties in Illinois, all of them in yellow. CPI history over the last eight years, again, we're at 1.5%. You'll see a CPI year, it kinda goes one year following another, so CPI year, and plus one is actually the levy year, and then plus one more is actually goes into our school years, which, which funds those particular levies are used for. So you see 1.5 has been reached, in 2010, we had 1.5, we also have been as low as 0.1% back in 2008, and as high as 4.1% over that same eight-year span. Our average, average over that particular eight-year span is 2.14%. This graph kinda gives a general representation of how the EAV change, the CPI, the tax rate work in coordination with one each other, with one another. Given the CPI, at the far left, you'll see if the CPI, EAV remains flat, the growth rate remains relatively flat, which will be at or near what CPI would be, the tax rate will remain fairly level. If the CPI, excuse me, if existing EAV is decreasing in relation to a higher CPI, the tax rate will actually increase. That is why I project we will fall for 2014. And given the CPI, if existing EAV is increasing, tax rates actually decrease. We have not seen that happen over the last several years in our district. So the process itself is, is a calculation one. It starts with our prior year aggregate extension, which is our total taxes extended by Sagamia County for last year, 2013. To that, we apply the CPI, which you'll see on the next page. We estimate EAV in new construction, which I have done, take those into consideration. From that, we come out a limiting rate, which, which basically is our max operating tax fund rate, and then we use that rate to distribute the money into the various funds once that extension is received. Again, CPI for this year, in our assumptions, is 1.5%. Our estimated EAV change, plus 2.23%, which will be exactly the same as the previous year. Estimated construction, $11 million, again, based on the last three years of declining growth. When factoring in the tax levy itself, two of our funds, the IMRF, and, actually, it's the same fund, but two parts of that fund, Fund 50, which is our retirement fund, the IMRF, and the FICA piece of that are both what I call solid levy funds. You cannot levy more of those funds than what our district believes will be necessary for the following fiscal year. And what I suggest, what I recommend is a 20% balloon levy. It does not mean that we're gonna achieve more than 20%, in fact, we've come over close to that over the last 10 years, but it does protect us from spikes in what I call the new growth factor. That's the one variable that we can't accurately predict until the end of the year, once we get that extension back from the county. Once the next page, I've already talked about this in the previous slide, but again, here's our calculation. Our rate under this calculation, operating rate, 3.8213% as calculated based on these assumptions falling into place, which would give us an estimated operating tax extension of $26.374 million in revenue for next year, that excludes debt. This is our levy as shown with the 2013 extension to the left, this is by fund, excluding debt on here. You'll see 25.57 million was our extension for 2013. Our 2014 estimated extension, how much money we think we will get, is actually 26,374,850. And the 2014 levy amount, this is what we actually levy with a 20% balloon to protect us against potential spikes in new property, 30,658,385. All of those are balloon levies, with exceptions of the IMRF and social security pieces that are, again, are fixed levy amounts. And you'll see there at the bottom, we would expect there an overall increase in total extension, operating extension of 3.14%. So really, that's a combination of two factors, it's the 1.5% CPI, which is basically our limit, plus the 1.64% estimated increase in new construction. And if we want to levy more than 5%, we do have to have a truth in taxation hearing at the December board meeting, which notice must be posted in the paper within, I believe, 10 days, 10 to 20 days before that particular hearing. Bottom line, when looking at the district as a whole, we're looking at a potential for 800, just under $804,000 in new revenue, based on that 3.1% increase. Again, that's, that's our operating increase overall. Again, this is the only revenue increase that we can predict up until, really, July, August of next year, when we start nailing down our final state budget numbers, in addition to our final federal budgetary amounts. to our final federal budgetary amounts as well. The operating, I'll note there, the operating fund, state aid, again, I'm looking at just the main four operating funds, education, O&amp;M, working cash, and IMRF, or, excuse me, transportation. We have had a 5.42% decline in state aid over the past three years that has equated to a $1.8 million reduction since FY 10-11, or about $600,000 a year lost from state aid reductions. That's not just general state aid, that is our mandated categoricals and all other state aids combined. So even though we are looking at 803,000 potential new revenues, that's quickly offset by that drop in state aid, which we foresee continuing to occur over the years to come until such time as they either revise our state aid formula or find additional avenues to bring in money for the district. Our bottom line or our impact on the tax rate, this shows us our operating rate to the left, again, 2013, $3.78. 2014 estimated at $3.82, for a change of just over 3 cents. Our bond and interest rate, 69 cents, actually just under 70 cents, anticipated to creep up just under 71 cents to about a 1 cent increase. For total tax rate, 2013 is $4.48, which will go up to roughly $4.53, or a change of 4.5 cents. And those rates there, again, reflected at the bottom of the page. This shows our impact on a, on a home, $100,000 in value in district. With that 4.5 cent increase, we will be looking at a roughly $13 increase in taxes annually for $100,000 of assessed valuation. Or, excuse me, $100,000 market value with assessed valuation at $28,333 after exemptions.
And that's on the 3.14%?
That's correct. Yes. And then my final slide there is our calendar. So tonight, we have the tentative levy, which I have just presented, that will be posted in the Chatham Clarion, December 4th. Our truth in taxation hearing would occur at the next board meeting, December 15th. We will file that no later than December 30th. And then our extension typically comes in from the county in the first week of April. We have about typically a week, if not shorter, to make any adjustments at that time that we feel are necessary. And again, that does kind of coordinate with the budget and where we were at at that particular time. That becomes finalized, county sends out bills, and we start bringing in tax receipts in May and June of next year.
And even though you request this, it doesn't mean that the county is going to grant that amount. They could choose to go lower than that.
This is a conservative estimate, I feel. It's driven by new property, so we could have a much lower new property amount, under the 11 million. I was going basically the lowest new property amount that we've had in the last 10 years, which was last year, 11.3 million, I believe it was. So again, that number can fluctuate quite a bit, up or down, and it's a really hard number to nail down.
So are we going to have a hearing then, Nate, in order to capture all of our, the new construction over the 5%? Isn't that what we need to do?
Yes, I recommend it. That's the...
Okay. And so that hearing would take place, basically, would that hearing take place on the 15th or today, or when would?
The 15th. It has to be posted publicly.
Okay. So we would post that...
Yes.
Publicly, okay, on the 15th for the hearing. And that's not, that's just to say we want to capture all of the new construction and make sure that we don't leave any monies on the table.
That's correct. Once you lose that money, it's gone forever.
And Nate's philosophy is to balloon higher than what we've done in the past, but I understand why he does it. You know, I think there are a lot of districts, exactly, there are a lot of districts that say, if you're going to have a hearing, go ahead and balloon up to, I mean, I've heard of districts saying 30%, even though they know they're going to get 2% or something.
I've done 50% before, so...
You know, I mean, it doesn't hurt. What hurts is if you don't, if you don't ask for enough, you never get that money back. So it doesn't hurt to balloon to something like 20%, but that's a different philosophy than what they've kind of done in the past. They ballooned, but up to, you know...
About 10, I think.
Yeah.
So, but it makes a lot of sense why you do it.
Yeah, I believe in being safe rather than sorry.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right. Because the last thing you want to do is leave any money on the table that the district can never get back from property taxes, so...
So I, well, first of all, thank you very much. It was a very, very good presentation. It's not an easy subject, and it was very well presented. So I just wanted to double check, we had a brief discussion about this in the finance committee meeting a while back, but one of the questions that I asked your advising opinion on was why our, why our health, life, safety rate was as low as it was, which was, you know, it's basically at zero. If you look at years past, it's been more than that. And your explanation was to put as much money as we could in the education fund and, if you elaborate a little bit further on that...
It appears part of the reason, and again, I can't comment specifically, you know, to, time prior to my tenure here, but it appears part of that reason was to try and inflate our reserves within O&amp;M.
Okay.
Particularly the last year.
Okay.
I think knowing that we had the 35 million in construction was the thought process back then, was that, you know, we have some construction bonds.
Correct. And it was that thought process, I mean, in the prior year and again in this year. So I guess what I'm saying is, the trade-off was made to fund the health, life, safety bonds very minimally in order to give us the best ratios for our bond rating, correct, as well as putting as much money into the education fund as possible. Would that be a fair statement?
We took a little bit of money, I think, out of the ed fund rate last year.
Right.
To also bump some money over to O&amp;M as well. And I can't comment specifically as to why that was.
Right.
But that's what the numbers are showing.
Right. So you put a little bit back in, but not as much as 2012.
Yeah, it appears to be a marginal amount overall.
Right.
And it's important to realize that the tax levy itself is not, we don't levy a rate, we levy total dollars. So until we get that extension back or the initial extension...
You're right.
We can move that money around as we see fit, as long as it don't exceed our caps per fund.
That's right. You can move your, you can move it around a little bit until, make some adjustments until, was it, it's February or something? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, we'll get our extension back in early April, maybe. Actually, yeah, somewhere in that timeframe. We have about a week to move money around as we see fit within those constructs.
Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to 8-4, we have a boiler issue to deal with.
Nate, do you want to stay up if there's anything else you want to add?
Oh, sure. I would recommend a vote, but I don't know if...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a, actually, that's...
It's a voting.
So it's a recommendation of the administration to approve the tentative tax levy as presented, so I'll need a motion to that effect.
I'll move.
Thank you, Brandon.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Betsy?
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
8.4. There is a recommendation of the administration to approve the adoption of the resolution as presented to proceed with emergency funding for the boiler replacement at Glenwood High School. Do we have information on this?
We put some of it up there. Dave Murphy unfortunately isn't able to be with us tonight, but I know Nate kind of looked at some of the details as well, the need to replace the boiler through health, life, safety.
So as I understand, there's some, I read everything, there's some stress fractures causing a propane leak or gas leak, and the...
Staff smelled the gas when students weren't present, turned it off.
And so everything was contained. This resolution here just allows us to put this through health, life, safety. We do have insurance specifically on our boilers as part of our property insurance. Mr. Murphy is in the process of submitting that initial claim as we speak as well to determine what total coverage we should have. But he's informed me that in the past, in similar circumstances, that this has been entirely covered by insurance. But until we know for sure, I certainly can't comment where we'll be at. But this allows us to use health, life, safety money should there be a gap there between what insurance gives us and the final cost.
So we're taking this out to bid. The initial estimate is $35,000, and the, what is left of that boiler will be retained and recycled for use with the other...
That's correct.
Boilers that are there, so we can use a lot of the parts.
Yep, that is what Dave reported.
And looks like there's been consultation with Graham and Hyde, Hanson, and our staff to determine the best course of action, and that was to replace the boiler rather than try to patch it. It's already four years past the expected life, the life expectancy of the system. Warranty is out. It was installed in 99 to 2000 year. And we need to move before the weather gets any colder to get this taken care of.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Excellent.
Motion by Lisa to approve the recommendation administration to proceed with emergency funding for the boiler replacement at Glenwood High School. Thank you, Lisa. Second by Brandon. Betsy?
Yep. Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Next, we have free study hall at Glenwood High School under New Business 9.1. Mr. Hay, thank you.
About 10 years ago, the board passed some incentives to try to encourage kids to do better on the Prairie State Achievement Exam. The biggest one of those was the free study hall that we've had in place since that time, where students can earn the privilege, you're probably familiar with it, the privilege to be free during their study hall and be in the commons or library or, and just, and not be in a study hall room. Due to the fact the Prairie State Achievement Exam is disappearing, that privilege would disappear with it if we didn't establish some new requirements to earn it. So our RTI core team, our universal team, actually got together and decided that we wanted to come up some new, we didn't want to get rid of the incentive. We wanted to make sure that we established some new parameters. So what we came up with was, to earn this privilege, students would have to have a final semester grade in all classes of a B-, B- minus or better in all courses. They would have no detentions and obviously suspensions during those times. They also, like they have juniors right now, if they have a detention right now, they'd have to serve it before the second semester began. And no unexcused absences for any class period or day. Most of, and then to maintain it, and this is something that's already part of it, they have to have to continue to do things to maintain it, they would have to continue to meet those requirements as they went through their senior year to maintain that privilege. A lot of the things that are in there are already being done, like for example, if it's to be lost, it's lost for a minimum of nine weeks. They have to fill out appropriate paperwork to get parental approval, we've always done it that way. But this would allow, and I think this is going to be better actually, because it extends the time period in which they have to earn it, both good and bad, because, you know, they could have a bad day on the test and never earn that. They could be naturally talented enough just to do well on the test and not even try and meet and exceed, meet in all areas and earn that. This way, they have to do it over an entire semester as juniors, going into their senior year, and then maintain it as well. We also included a provision where if they didn't earn it the second semester of their junior year, they could go into the first semester of their senior year, if they met those requirements, then that spring semester, that second semester, they could earn it for that time period. So it extends that, you know, incentive period even longer for them to do well in those three areas. We looked at the numbers last year, this year's senior class, if this were in place last year, 111, 111 students would have earned it. We currently had 137 students eligible for free study hall in the old requirements. And the 111, of course, is with no real incentive. So we're assuming that there would be minimum of 111 students, hopefully, you know, a lot, that would see this as an incentive to do, you know, a little bit better on their grades, not miss a single period unexcused and have no detentions whatsoever to try to earn that privilege.
Would help with senioritis, wouldn't it?
I would hope, because I have seniors next year.
This is a recommendation of administration as well as the RTI committee.
The RTI, the RTI core team met and discussed this. I also sent this to the student council, and the student council met and debated on it, and they gave me their feedback, and they were in support. So faculty and students have both discussed this and come with this idea.
My only question was the C versus B minus. Was that part of why they...
Before, to earn it, of course, you have to get your test score. Then to maintain it, you had to have a C or higher. We thought it'd be best just to have the same level to earn it as well as maintain it all the way through.
Do you anticipate a lower number qualifying for it with that B minus?
Looking at the numbers, I would expect it's probably going to be somewhere. I mean, I'm thinking a minimum of 111 in that area, since they got, since they would have done that with no incentive. I hope that this would encourage them to do better. The plan would be, if you approve this, to meet with the juniors on Wednesday during the half-day and explain to them, this is the situation. Right now, technically, they're all eligible for it. You know, they all could start a new January 6th, and we could have 360 kids or whatever it is on free study hall their senior year, that'd be great. We'd have to figure out that problem another way, but it'd be a heck of a, heck of a second semester this year, so...
I can tell you from experience that free study hall is quite a motivator in our household. I mean, kids love that and they work for it. So if they know early on and can plan for achieving at that B, you know, level, I think that's a great, great...
And also, I mean, there are probably some students who couldn't, who don't, may not have the ability to meet in one of the three areas, but yet they work hard, and their course schedule is such that would allow them to get all As or at least minimum B- minuses in every course. And it may open up opportunities for more students to earn that privilege, you know, just by working hard in their course level. You know, some students would take a higher, more honors AP courses, it may be tougher for them to do, to meet this than to meet in three areas in the PSA eight. So it may, you know, encourage more students across the board to do well this next semester.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hay. With that, it's the recommendation of the GHS administration to approve the new qualifications and standards for the free study hall. I need a motion. Thank you, Jim. And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Lisa? Betsy?
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yep.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
9-2, speech team competition in Kentucky.
I believe this is the third or fourth year we've come to you with this, that this is the big tournament for the speech team, and they, they gain an awful lot out of it, and it's a great experience for them. We always bring it forth because it does have them cross state lines, and so you should approve that and know and be aware of that. They are becoming more and more self-sufficient with this. They'll pay for the transportation this time, and kids pay for their own meals, they're asking, as we would any tournament, to pay the registration fee. And speech is a little different. When you go to a large tournament, you have to either bring judges with you or help pay for the judges when you get there. It's kind of a different animal than some of other extracurricular activities. So the estimated cost would be $800 to $900 for registration and the judging to be taken care of. Though Mr. Carter always has plenty of chaperones, and he does a very, very good job. So they're just looking to, once again, make this trip to Kentucky and participate in the tournament at Bowling Green.
Questions or discussion?
No.
So they're just looking to, once again, make this trip to Kentucky and participate in the tournament at Bowling Green.
Questions or discussion? No, he's going to make a motion. So we'll need a motion to approve the speech team traveling to Bowling Green for a one night stay to take part in the tournament at an approximate cost of $800 to $900.
I think Jim just made that.
Thank you, Jim. Second. Brandon, thank you. Betsy?
Yes, Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitesell?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Peter Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Jim, Mr. Lee, one question. What happened on Saturday? I mean, we had a group that was...
Did they go?
Yeah, they went. They went to, the speech team went to East St. Louis on Saturday and we didn't know when the decision was coming down, which by the way, it just came down.
Oh, I didn't see that.
They, no, they didn't indict them.
Didn't?
No. So there, all the schools were calling each other. They were calling East St. Louis. East St. Louis couldn't understand why everybody was calling, they think it was a big deal. And basically, we left it that if anything came down that made it questionable, we wouldn't send them. And so I informed Carrie and I had seen Jim at the Fairmont and told them what we were thinking. Mr. Carr and I kept in contact through text and email and the way things ended Friday night, we decided to go let them go. He said it was fantastic, said the people were fantastic and it went smoothly. So no issues. Good.
Thanks for staying on top of that.
Thank you. 9.3, update from the Technology Steering Committee.
We put this on the agenda just to, you know, kind of give an opportunity for those who had been on the tech steering committee to, if you'd like to share, but there's a little bit of an overview and we've had several meetings. We've tried to meet regularly. The first several meetings were longer because we were really talking about a lot of things. And so you'll see on the list of people that we have teachers, we have support staff, we have parents, you know, we even have a high school student representative, which is so great because we really haven't done that for district-wide committees in the past. And I'll tell you, we are extremely impressed with the selection that Mr. Lee made for our student representative. He's very insightful and as we know, students know a lot more about technology than any of us do. So it's nice to have that perspective too. But really, at the beginning, this meeting, or the committee had a lot of things to talk about and we tried to narrow down to, let's focus on what we need to do in the short term and then kind of putting it almost in a bucket of, there are things that we need to address long-term too. And we're not forgetting about those, but we want to make sure that we address some short-term. And then, you know, as you know, we've brought a couple of recommendations forward and that's the idea of this committee, is to bring the voices of our staff to a table that then can make recommendations to the board, but those recommendations then, you know, are something that you can consider. But having a couple of board members at least present at those meetings helps carry on that conversation. So I listed some of the things that we talked about and I'll let board members who've been present jump in. But also at the bottom there, there was a little bit of a conversation at the end of our last meeting about, well, we've been talking a lot about technology inventories and making sure we have an up-to-date inventory. And at the bottom there, I listed that we had considered, you know, temp support for collecting that information because we don't want to take our staff away from their current duties to inventory, but we thought, you know, this is something that temp staff could do. And then we even thought about the fact that we have some staffs, some of our staff, who might be interested in doing that. And, you know, it might be something where we can explain to them what we're looking for, you know, give them some documentation, either in a Google form or something like that, where they can go around during the Christmas break. As oftentimes, our support staff say, you know, we'd like to have some more income during those Christmas breaks when we're not working. So we thought we could throw that out there and post the positions, post them as, you know, obviously they'd be temporary, but post some hours and see if we can get some help with that. So I kind of put that at the bottom for your consideration too. So really, I listed this item as discussion and information, but also as an action item just for that piece of, you know, some temp support. So I'll stop talking. So anybody else that wants to jump in, Ken?
Well, I have attended the tech committee meetings rather faithfully and I think it's a great idea if we can hire support staff. And I think that's a first good choice so that they may have, if they choose to want to work and earn some extra money, they may have that opportunity. Because I think to let winter vacation go by without spending some time gathering some of this needed information for determining our inventory would be a lost opportunity. So regarding the last paper, I'm fully in favor of it.
Would that time count towards their $600?
It would. It would. We'd have to rely on kind of our tech team too to tell us how many hours makes sense, how many people does it, you know, we don't want to just guess that they might be able to help us with that. So we thought it was a good idea and made sense to even hire our own staff if they're looking for some Christmas work or winter work.
Other questions or comments here?
So if you're comfortable with that, then like I said, I didn't put a number to it of how many or how many hours, but if you're comfortable with the dollar amount of being $12 an hour, then we can talk to, the next step would be we would talk to our tech team to say, how many hours do you think this might take? Or how many people does it make sense to have? I wouldn't imagine we'd want a lot of people with their hands on it because you want to make sure it's really accurate information. But maybe one per building or something, yeah. So I know there's not like a, this is the amount we're going to pay, but the dollar amount and then knowing that maybe it makes sense to do one per building or a couple per building. I'm not sure yet what that looks like.
No, I'm in wholehearted agreement because we just need to gather this information.
Do we have any kind of a inventory program in the district that uses barcodes or any other?
We do and it's in our storage room and I don't know enough about it to know how well it works or I'm looking at Teresa and Jen. And I'm actually looking at Dwayne.
We purchased one last year and has now been set up and I question my current staff's ability to have that database in place prior to break. I'm not sure that they'll have the time and energy to have that ready to go. I think we're looking at low-tech paper and pencil inventory at this point with the hopes of moving into a inventory database.
Just so we have it for a starting place and then can get a better system.
So all these wheels are in motion to stabilize this, the current plan or the current technology. Any indication as to what kind of a timeframe we're looking at that it might be stable? I know we're looking at a month before we get towers installed.
Jen, do you mind taking the podium? Just for the microphone.
Ballpark, we're looking at maybe after Christmas break or we're looking into the summer?
I guess I was trying to figure out, stable, when you say stable?
Well, that's the term that's been thrown around. I'm just trying to make it stable, so I'm just trying to...
Do you want to talk about what tickets are out there now, what issues we have and how stable we are? She's reviewing those.
We're better than we have been. We started today at about 68 tickets. Our staff is able to close several each day, but it seems like each day we get at least 11 to 15 new tickets. So as quickly as we close them, they're reopening with tickets.
And some are going to be normal.
Some are. Some are directly related to the work that you've already engaged in, which Sentinel will be starting Wednesday through Sunday. We're hoping to see some success with that. However, that is one piece of that puzzle. We're also waiting for the wireless project, which will be done over Christmas. But again, that is still, I mean, we had 15 findings in the first report. So I don't want to mislead anybody and think that by Christmas, it's all going to be where it needs to be. It is very much a process. We're also awaiting the results of the network assessment where I don't know what that's going to show at this time as well.
And some of the results then hand off to other actions to be taken place.
Absolutely. For instance, this weekend, there are three components to the project. One can be done by itself or the other two are contingent or dependent upon each other. So we have to be careful that we complete the one first to be able to go into the Citrix component. And actually, people from Arizona are working on it. It is very much divided up, but we have a clear plan. I had a great, great, actually four, since we were talking about my travel. I was back and forth to the middle school four times today to talk about technology with Tina's teachers, great discussions, updating them in between going to GES for specialized conversation. But I think our staff is understanding where we're at and I'm just trying to educate them and be as upfront and transparent as possible. We just, we don't know at this point. We're still waiting for the results of the assessment and we need to make sure that we're doing it accurately and doing it right this time.
We're taking advantage of the long weekend too, to shut everything down and have some of this work done because as we've seen, sometimes too, when they're in fixing something, it'll shut down something else and we, you know, we then send a ticket and it's, well, this is, you know, skyward's down. Well, it's because of the work that we're doing to improve. So luckily, we have a long weekend and so Wednesday at 3:00, they're going to shut everything down. We've told our staff that, you know, listen at 3 o'clock on Wednesday, you won't have the ability, because we're going to go ahead and start that, some of those fixes that we've been working on.
One of the other exciting things that I think came out of the tech committee was Sentinel did a snapshot one day of our network and at the high school, keep in perspective, we have 1,384 students. At one time, that one moment in time, there were 1,300 devices pulling on our bandwidth, our network at that one time at the high school alone. And so even though students may not be actively using it or staff or whoever's working, your phone is still pulling on that network, which is pulling our bandwidth away from our teachers who need it from instructional purposes. We had a very healthy dialogue and conversation at the tech steering committee about what can we do to kind of lock that down a little bit. So that was part of what I was doing today with Tina's team. And actually, all of our teachers across the district are assisting us with locating the MAC addresses so that we can lock down that network, add some layers of authentication so that really, truly the devices that should be pulling on that have first crack at it and have the bandwidth necessary to be able to make it through the day. That's a big first step for us.
And the guest network is open for others.
Yeah, I never really thought about it. That's how we have our networks set up at home. So that's a really easy, simple, easy fix.
You say it's simple, it's not that simple.
Well, it's not that simple.
It is that simple.
So simple.
It sounds simple, but it isn't. I've learned a lot about that, but the teachers and staff have been very supportive in assisting us because we did not have the inventory of the MAC addresses, but they're helping us collect that. We've explained it. In fact, the tech team put together a fantastic tutorial and YouTube videos to support it. Screenshots, I mean, I could do it and I don't even know how to do Excel. I have a fantastic assistant.
I think what's great about, it's an example of that group coming together and finding a solution to, because like we started talking about, well, you know, we could lock down this, but that means you have to physically touch every device to figure out, you know, and so that, we almost kind of stopped at that point and said, well, that would take way too much time. We just don't have the time to do that. And then the staff said, we'll help. We can, you know, this isn't hard to do, we'll help do it. We'll help collect that information. So it's, you know, a couple of clicks on their computer and they can look at their MAC address, they can put it on a Google form and then it's populated into a list of what we're calling like an allow list where it's allowed, you know, your MAC address is allowed, you know, access to that wireless network and everybody else then is on the guest network. So it was kind of nice to, I mean, I think it was really refreshing to have everybody kind of say, we want to help. And they all did.
And it was, I think, a bit like at a hotel where you get that password so you get access for that day. That's how my brain works, so I was explaining it to teachers in that way. But some people have said that we're not making much progress, that we do a lot of talk. We have a lot to do. So it is going to take us baby steps. I hate to see us jumping and spending money that doesn't need to be done, but I really do feel like we've made a lot of progress since October. And remember, I'm just interim tech person.
Can I ask a question? We went to a neighboring school district and talked to them about bringing devices to school, didn't we?
Couple of people into rush.
Yeah. I just read in an article in the paper over the weekend that they have a network set up to where kids can use, have Wi-Fi access on the school buses.
On the school bus?
That's what the article says. So have we talked to them?
I have not.
I know Chad had been in communication with them some because his own children go there, so I don't know about that specifically.
I'd just be curious to know how we're struggling to keep devices down and they're allowing them to go to the school buses. I mean, isn't that the same, they're saying they're using wireless, right?
We're quite larger. Just a reminder, this is not my area of expertise. I'm just filling in.
But it's just a matter, I understand. I'm just curious, I mean, if we're going to them to see how their technology is working in their classrooms so that they can bring their own devices, just thought maybe we could see how they're making all this work and on the buses.
It's not hard to make it work. It's not hard to make it work.
If you've got all the parts in place.
Sure.
So what kind of parts have they got that they can turn the whole kids loose on the bus?
And you look at, we have what?
I don't know.
Mr. Lovelace, we have 60 some buses.
98.
98 square miles of district as opposed to much smaller.
So we have too big of a district to have wireless on the buses?
We don't allow devices on the buses anyway.
Okay, so it helps.
Cross that one off.
We don't want them to use the devices on the buses.
Well, there is a setup for students traveling to games and stuff so they can do homework that they need to.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea. No, it isn't.
Well, I was going to say Amtrak has done a lot of, you know, sharing that they're going to have.
They have it. I used it all, I used it round trip from Chicago this weekend.
So it's doable.
Wi-Fi all the way.
And there's a lot of people traveling on Amtrak, right?
Well, yeah, it's choked down. I mean, you can't do...
It's doable. We're not, we haven't reached the limit that we can't do it. It's just, we've got to figure out, but we've got to put it in place to make it happen. Just a thought.
I mean, I have, I have, you know, come to the meetings and it's nice to see that there's, you know, there's definitely some relief. But I guess my question is, what I haven't yet figured out is the SAN assessment. Do you know what that encompasses?
You had it in the last board meeting, there was actually, they broke it into four projects.
Okay, right.
It's those four projects were the recommendations to meet the 15 findings that were identified in that assessment.
So I guess that's a question that I bring before the full board. When I first read that, to be honest with you, I didn't understand everything that was being said, partly because I didn't, now I have much more background information on some of the tech difficulties. But I'm wondering, we, basically, I read in the paperwork that you can always submit a bid project change report form. So I guess my question is to the board, do you feel that it would be prudent to put any of these remaining parts out to bid for some of the other portions of the SAN assessment? Or do you choose just to have them do all four projects?
Can I make one comment? I would make the recommendation to hold on project number four at this time.
Okay.
Because that was where Sentinel would work directly with our staff. I don't feel, especially with where we're at, that it's appropriate to move forward. That would be my personal recommendation is to hold off on project number four at this time.
Well, okay, so, I mean, I guess we could have some sort of, something for a discussion next month and for an approval to issue a bid project change form. They have them otherwise. We have to basically approve that we want to make a change to what was previously agreed. And if Jen says, let's pull off on project four.
We haven't agreed.
Yeah, we haven't agreed to four.
Right. And that one was already, we already had maintenance support from EMC through 2016.
And we've got tickets and some of the work being done, but project four, we hadn't moved forward with yet.
None of those have come to you.
So I guess my question is, since you all have a sense of the workflow of this and knowing that when we can go out for bid on various tasks, projects, supplies, et cetera, when, when does that naturally occur? Or when could the board be informed that this would be a natural time to take this this and knowing that when we can go out for bid on various tasks, projects, supplies, et cetera, when does that naturally occur or when could the board be informed that this would be a natural time to take this out to bid if we so chose? How do we know when that is going to occur?
We were kind of asking the committee for input about that, too, and we were kind of at that point looking at what are some of the longer-term issues that we can do that with. Some of these we felt like just need to be fixed right now. We need to make it, you know, to stabilize the network. So we're kind of looking at it in terms of longer-term, but that is something that I think we should keep on the agenda of the Technology Steering Committee of when do you feel like, you know, what can be bid? Is it that they, you know, perhaps there's a list of equipment that, you know, we need to get several quotes from different vendors or is it a list of, you know, services that we can say, is there another provider out there?
And even with the, for instance, like the network assessment that is coming soon, I've asked for timelines. What really is immediate? What is a one-year plan? What is a three-year plan? Because this isn't my area, so I don't know what is immediate. Firefighting mode, we have to do now versus you have some time, we can get you to this point and buy you some time. So hopefully, with that next assessment, we'll have some clear information on that.
And I think you brought this up in some other meetings about the need to bid when appropriate. And also, in this report, the committee has discussed which priorities need to be handled on the emergency timeline and which can be long-term solutions with the understanding that some of the long-term needs can be bid to ensure best pricing. So I think the overall tone here is and theme is to make sure that we don't interrupt what work is being done now.
Right.
And we've got to trust that we are receiving services at a fair price, but as soon as we can and when appropriate and when it's in the best interest of the district, we need to make sure that we take things out to bid to ensure that we've got the right vendor, right pricing.
I think the board would agree with that. I mean, I certainly agree with that.
And that seems to be coming through in the tone of the report back from the committee, so I think we're coming, you know, to the understanding that, you know, we want to bid whatever we can. We do have to have a technology plan, though, in order to bid that and look at our long-term issues and long-term goals for our network and what we're going to do with Chromebooks and how much that takes up in the network, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not, it's not a stagnant picture that we're looking at. It's always evolving and will evolve until, you know, until we don't, there's no more vault chat in school, so.
So we have a plan now, right? If you don't?
We're developing it. I mean, you've seen the plan you had it the last time that is old.
Just adding devices.
Pardon?
Just adding devices, trying to add laptops, add Chromebooks.
Yeah, no, I did some research because I know you forgot that question, Steve, and I do, too, you know, we've got to have a plan. Where's the plan? And I did find there's a 2020 technology development plan going back from 2010 to 2011, going all the way through 2019 to 2020. I'm sure that, being that dated, we would need to look at that and I think when the assessment comes in, that'd be a great time to update that. In July, you know, the adding the Chromebooks and the tech labs and all that was all brought to us and I took a look at the spreadsheet attached to that and there's a lot of costs in here. There's some maintenance and purchases. So I think we're also going to have to get into, you know, diving into the budget that was developed, you know, a year ago to see what are we still spending? You know, is all this spending on hold? What kind of dollars are freed up with what we were thinking back then now?
And I already asked that question in the hopes that we could return some of those Chromebooks, but that wasn't a possibility.
What I'm saying is that...
I mean, what I did email about this very issue, is there anything that we can return?
Well, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, I'm saying that there are dollars budgeted for tech and our tech world has been turned upside down.
Right.
And some of the dollars that were budgeted may need to be, or may be redirected now because we don't need to continue on the path that we were on if the assessment turns up a different way to go. Maybe we don't do this or we do do that. Yeah, I think there was $60,000 for maintenance.
Right.
Should that be used to, redirected to the updating of the maintenance agreements that were expired? So I think there's a lot of moving parts that we...
But in that conversation, Rick, do you recall that Chad said some of those projects on that recommendation and request could be taken out of bond monies? So, and he made some reference that some, but not all, and that was the, that was one point that I made, that as much as we could spend out of bond monies, we should.
And that's, yeah, and that's the theme that we're on, too. If we can use bond money for improvements to the infrastructure and that, that we need to, we need to do that to take some stress off of the operating funds that are so stressed.
Could you explain Susan about your request to return Chromebooks?
Well, actually, it was after, it was after, I guess, I wrote the email in September or something and Chromebooks were purchased, but the system had crashed, basically, from, I mean, as I understand it, the system was non-functioning beginning of school year. And in the interim, we had purchased Chromebooks. So I had written an email saying, have the Chromebooks been purchased? And yes, they had been. Can we return them? Because, I mean, we obviously couldn't add any, it didn't make any sense to, it didn't make sense to purchase the Chromebooks now knowing that what we knew. And I had merely suggested, well, perhaps they could be returned. I mean, not because they were defective, merely because they weren't useful to us because the system was down. I guess that wasn't, I believe they could not be returned. It was just a cash flow issue. I mean, why spend our cash purchasing devices when the system is broken?
We're going to have that back up by Christmas.
Excuse me?
We're going to have that ready to go by Christmas. We're going to get that wireless up and that's my goal.
Don't make any...
I'm not making a promise. I said that's my goal.
Okay.
That is my goal.
Well, we, in September, we didn't know what was the sky and what was the ground. Would that be a fair statement?
That can be a fair statement. I just think our students need it and we owe it to them to get them what they need. That's why we're here. It's about instruction.
It's part of our curriculum plan to move kids to the, to Chromebooks or to some type of a device, we've chosen Chromebooks and we have to maintain that, I think, to maintain the plan.
It was a cash flow issue as well, though. It was a cash flow issue, certainly. I mean, I'm not saying that they never needed to be purchased, I was just saying to help our cash flow, we could, you know, retrieve some of that cash flow through returning